City Ordinary Council Meeting, it's good to have you with us tonight via the live stream. Always a pleasure to have you with us at our regular meetings and we hope that you're able to see and hear us nice and clearly. We're live streaming by the Latrobe City Council's YouTube channel. And for those of us, those of you who are joining us tonight via audio visual link, let's take the opportunity to introduce our Deputy Mayor Dan Clancy, councillor Darren Howe, councillor Sharon Gibson, councillor Dale Harriman, councillor Brad Law, councillor Tracy Lundy, councillor Graham Middlemiss. Also a welcome to our CEO Stephen Piesenti, would you have an apology tonight from councillor Melissa Ferguson? As we're moving through tonight's agenda, you'll see that available to you on the screen as well, so you can follow along. And you also have it available if you want the full agenda through the download on the website. We now move on to our recognition of traditional landowners and our prayer. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today on the traditional land of the Brakalong people of the Gunnoa Kurno Nation. And I pay my respects to the elders past and present. I would also like to acknowledge any of the elders who may be joining us tonight as part of the live stream. I'd also like to acknowledge you and to pass on our thanks to Glawak and the elders who were instrumental in our welcome to our opening of GPAC. We were grateful for their participation. And to the prayer, our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for the kingdom, the power and the glory are yours now and forever. Amen. Just moving on to some housekeeping matters. I want to remind those who are joining us tonight that we are operating under a range of governance rules. There won't be any speakers joining us tonight, but for those who are out there, just be mindful that any of the contributions you may make through any of those channels, we do have the opportunity to capture any of those as we work through. So they may be recorded as anything that you participate in there. Now moving on to apologies for the meeting, as I mentioned, we do have an apology tonight from councillor Melissa Ferguson. Not, we don't have any other apologies or anyone requesting a leave of absence at that point. On item seven, I'm sorry, item four of our agenda is our declaration of interests. Councillors, do we have any declarations? Councillor Harriman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As previously stated to the CEO, I have a general conflict in item 10.1 in that the company I've worked for is quoting or has quoted for an alternate led monitoring system as well. So I'll be leaving the room when that's on.
Great, thanks Dale. Appreciate you doing that. Councillor Clancy?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I have also previously declared through briefing period and to the CEO directly that I have a conflict of interest at 14.1, which is the regional car park fund. And I've put that paperwork in previously with the CEO. I also have another declaration if I could, but not a conflict, Madam Mayor, but just one of clarity if I could, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, because there's a number of items in the agenda tonight that were related to the state government and advocacy with the state government. I thought I'd take this opportunity at the start of the meeting during the declaration period to make a declaration regarding the state election later in the year. The, the Latrobe City Councillor Code of Conduct outlines the councillor must make, make a declaration. If they become endorsed candidate of a registered political party or publicly express an intention to run as an independent. They must advise the CEO and the council group. So with rumour and innuendo circulating around more frequent than it does usually. And with the rate that it's starting to impact my work as a councillor, I thought it was time to make a declaration that I am not a member of a political party. And I do not have any intention of becoming a candidate at the next state election. Whilst my interest in serving this community is at the highest level, my commitment to my work as a councillor and to the role of deputy mayor that I'm currently under is unwavering. I do not seek any other office to do this work from. So even though my declaration isn't one of a conflict of interest, it is a declaration of clarity that I am not a member of any political party. And I would like to ensure that my work within this council and the decision-making process that I go through is not questioned for any other reason for the benefit of Latrobe City and our community. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thanks councillor Clancy. Councillors, any other declarations or matters you would like to declare on the general nature? Oh, okay. Thanks very much, councillors. We'll keep moving through and we will endeavour to catch those opportunities to put you into the waiting room where we need to on 10.1 and 14.1 as we progress to move through. Next on the agenda is item five, this is the adoption of the minutes, it's on page four of tonight's agenda. Councillor, do I have a move or motion for a minute? Councillor Gibson, thank you so much. Do I have a second, the councillors? Councillor Howe, thank you. Any opposition, any points of discussion? No, looks like we're carried unanimously on that one. Thank you so much, councillors. We move on to item six on our agenda, which is our acknowledgements. Before we move through them, we do actually have a list of acknowledgements and a number of my colleagues would might like to move through, which is fantastic. But I would like to just pause for a moment to acknowledge the dire situation in Europe right now with significant refugee movement from the Ukraine and the challenges facing the Ukrainian and also Russian communities and the members of our community with family members or origins in these two nations. We extend our greatest sympathy and we hope that your communities return to peace very, very soon. We also on behalf of the council would like to extend our thoughts and best wishes to the communities in New South Wales that are being impacted by flood and storm emergency. Our community knows as well as any the significant impact that that has, not only in the immediacy of the emergency response, but also in the intermediate and longer term, as you work through those things. I do know that we've had local SES representatives who have already started to make their way to help with their response and we acknowledge them also. My colleagues tonight will be speaking on a range of matters. One of those of course will be the Gibson Performing Arts Centre opening. And there's no way to avoid the grandeur that that was. I thank all of my colleagues who were actively involved and I'm sure many of them will wish to speak to that tonight. This is by no way the only acknowledgement. There's been some on social media. We will continue over the next week to highlight and focus on all the wonderful things that have happened, the individual performances by our community members, touring artists, but also the community's interaction on the, on the days and through the events. And you will also see across a range of media platforms, some formal recognition and the full list of everyone who was there and made their contribution. And we thank them, but we're very grateful to everyone who came along and I'm grateful personally to my colleagues who were there to support through those days. And some of you did a peril of work with many, many people to help them find their way through the facility. Thank you for that. I'll move on firstly to councillor Clancy. I believe you have some acknowledgements to make in relation to GPAC.
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. I would like to, yeah, acknowledge a number of people through the, the, the opening of GPAC. Not just the four day celebration that we had, but also the lead up to, to that, that opening. It was, it was a grand weekend and I'd like to acknowledge many people, but I'm not going to single out any, anyone in particular or one person. I thought I'd, I'd do it by groups and in general, general terms. So I don't leave anyone out. I'd hate to, to miss someone. But first of all, I would like to say to, to each one of the councillors, it was great to see each one of you over the, the four day opening. And councillor Ferguson's not here this evening, but I would like to thank her as well. It was great to see her at the opening. But each councillor was there over that period of time, if not just for, for, for the official duties, but also to see some shows and to mix with the community and talk. And it was, it was really, really nice to see each one of us who have been on this journey for, for a long period of time to, to be together during that time. To the artists who performed, the performers, the musicians, the professionals that pulled it all together. There, there was a lot of artists that were involved and I'd like to acknowledge each one of them for playing their part. Whether it be a small part or a large part, but the artists certainly contribute a great deal to, to the opening weekend. And to the staff, particularly through the CEO, I'd like to thank the staff, the arts team, the project management team, the, the, the building team, the events team. Nearly every single part of council, whether it be the health and wellbeing team who work through accessibility options, right through to the grounds crew who, who worked with us on, on where grass should be laid and where it shouldn't be laid. So I'd like to thank everyone for that as well. I'd like to acknowledge the community members that, that have, that have been involved in this project from the start. They're creative, they're vibrant and they're an engaged sector. And it's, it's my hat goes off to you for, for not just the way that you've gone about it, but for your advocacy and the way that you've, you've really pushed this forward to the users, to each of the, the companies, to the dance companies, to the, to the musical groups, to the orchestras, to the theatre companies, to, to the users who, who will use it in, in time to come. They might not even know they're going to use it yet, but the, to the users, I'd like to thank them as well. And I'd like to acknowledge the, the, the PRG, this is the, the project reference group who worked alongside council. As a group of users and community members, their input was, was, was fantastic. And that has been spoken about quite length over the weekend as well. So thank you to them. The arts is certainly a joyful and a happy, happiness and a great place to be. And, and people have recognised that over that period of time that, that, that it makes them feel good and that they, even when, when the show, you know, is great, you, you feel great. And even if the show's not so good, it's just great to be in the venue. I think I heard someone say just before. So, so it is, it is great. The arts does make us feel good and it's not just there for entertainment, it's also there for, for building up our, our young people and people who work in, in, and live in this area as well. The benefits for, for being involved in the arts is the social connection, the mental health and wellbeing, as well as that expression that you have as well. Plus there's an economic benefit and that's, that's certainly something that this council has been working very, very hard on. So thank you to each one of the councillors and to the previous councillors over many terms that have, that have worked towards this as well. To the builders, to beacon, to the architects, to the trades, the local workers, to the 65 subcontractors that were involved and 155 local workers that worked on the building. It, it looks magnificent, but it, the building is one thing, the steel and the concrete and the water are one thing, but how we use it is going to be a very, very different thing. This is the people's theatre, it's for the people and it's certainly going to be by the people. So thank you very much to each one of the community members who came along and sat in the, sat in the seats and clapped their hands over the weekend. It was lots and lots of people there. So lots of people to thank, Madam Mayor. I know that I haven't touched on anyone individually, but those, those people and those, those credits will be published, you know, on social media channels and, and in the media as well. So thank you to each one of you and to everyone involved.
Thank you councillor Clancy, and it certainly was a big weekend. Any other councillor who was either involved in any of that or wanted to speak to GPAC as well? No? Okay, we're moving through then. Councillor Gibson, oh, sorry, Dale, did you want to jump onto GPAC before I go to?
No, I will discuss it with the other, the other item I'm going to bring up as an acknowledgement, but I'll wait till the others have gone through or just putting it up in casual, moving on.
No, absolutely. I won't forget you, I do promise. Councillor Gibson, you wanted to speak to contribution of Ashley Wells?
Yes, I did. Thanks, Madam Mayor. And look, I hope I do her justice because this is a lady, if you go through her, her history, she actually started playing when she was four to five years old and she started playing in Churchill. Now, of course I'm speaking about Ashley Wells, Ash to some. Now she was originally a Maui lady or a Maui girl and now she's a more lady. Now her, and at first she started off as a goalkeeper and didn't really think much of it. And said, I'll go elsewhere and play, or play elsewhere. And then they said, you're really good. So she went back there and just as well she did because she actually did over a hundred matches, international matches. So, you know, if she hadn't have done that, would she have been there? I, I don't know, but we'll never know anyway because she did. And she, she was actually one of the best in the world. Some would say she was ripped off not to be named the, the world's best goalkeeper, but we can all have our own opinion of that. Now, I, I have written or, or highlighted some of the things. And if you can bear with me, because there's a lot to actually be proud of.
If you wouldn't mind going through all of them councillor Gibson, I think we've got the time tonight, we might as well make good use of it.
No, you're not. Okay, now, so, but she also with some of the challenges that she faced in her career, it made her more hardened and it made her stronger. So, you know, when you're coming from a little country town that some might call Churchill and it's on grass court or not a grass court, a grass and it's on grass court or not a grass court, a grass field to in front of a stacked or a packed stadium of over fifteen thousand. Now, not everybody can handle that and then play to the standard that she did, but she did and she did it with aplomb. So, you know, we breed them pretty damn good over here. So hats off to her with that. And as said, yeah, she did start with Churchill Hockey. Now, she made her first, now get a load of this, she made her first state team at eleven. You know, um most of us are not doing things like that at eleven, but she was. So and it just got bigger and better from there. Uh she played in a a variety of state teams and she gained selection in the, and I am reading this, in the under eighteen and under twenty one squads on the same year. So, you know, um some might, I'd love to see how many actually did the double up. So, you know, this is just showing you the calibre of what and her ability that she had. Now, um and with the first one, her maiden national team was the under sixteen team and she travelled to South Africa. So, you know, under sixteen, off you go, South Africa. What a, what an achievement. But she didn't stop there. As I said, um she played in over one hundred and twenty three appearances. Now, um and of course, this was with the hockey ruse. Now, I I think she has left a a huge legacy, but she's willing and hoping to make a bit of a career out of actual coaching. So I would suggest that down here would really like her as the coach down here. Um but she's also on the lookout to to help pass it on. So not all players, um professional players wish to pass it on, but she does. So my hat's off to her and, you know, how great that is for a person who, you know, often the media and some put us down, it's only it's only my it's only Moll Church or whatever. But look what we've actually um produced here. So hats off to Ashley and now time for you to put your feet up a little bit more um and enjoy the the rewards of your success. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Right, thanks councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe, you were going to pick up on some acknowledgements in relation to Clean Up Australia Day that happened over the weekend.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh two acknowledgements, if I may. Uh the first one is to the um Traugan Central Rotary Club for their Clean Up the Creek Walk. Um after the floods last year, the Traugan Creek was left in a bit of a mess with the the plastic and other rubbish strewn along the banks. So the members of the Rotary Club saw this and decided to um act on it. So yesterday being sixth of March, which was Clean Up Australia Day, the Traugan Central Rotary Club joined joined in with their Clean Up the Creek Walk project. The objective of this was to improve the health of the creek, the banks and the immediate surrounding areas. They formed partnerships with the West Gippsland Catchment Management Authority, the Gunai Kurnai Land and Waters Aboriginal Corporation and ourselves, the Latrobe City Council. They also had sponsorship from AGL and from uh the Traugan Centre Plaza. On the day, they had some volunteers ranging ages from the twenty five years of age up to seventy five years, who all joined together right up their sleeves and pitched in. Um they managed to clean up the area on both sides of the creek from the Shakespeare Street Bridge through the bridge near the tennis courts. Uh this is going to be first of many, many um actions that come from the Friends of the Traugan Creek. Um and from yesterday only, they've received fifteen expressions of interest in supporting the group. So well done to everyone involved with that. Um as I stated, the surrounds of our Traugan, of our town's great asset, the Traugan Creek, are a lot cleaner today through everyone's efforts. Um and my second acknowledgement is to the Tyres and District Community Association. Along a similar vein, the T D C A organised two Clean Up Australia Day projects yesterday. One was in Tyres and the others was at Tyres Park. Um and despite the rain, the volunteers managed to clean up around the Tyres Recreation Reserve, the playground, the CFA, the petrol station and the Tyres Lookout. So well done to everyone that jumped in out there and helped to make a difference in their own backyard. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe, looks like there's a lot of work happening in community this weekend as well. Councillor Harriman, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I too, as you have done, would like to acknowledge um what our Ukrainian residents in Latrobe Valley are going through at the minute. Um I have been fortunate to be approached by a couple. Um and to say they're under stress is is a, you know, understatement. Um and and the concern and worry they're going through, I'd like them to know that that Latrobe City's there to help if needed. Um I'd also like to acknowledge a couple of former Moll and Traugan residents um who are on their way to Poland as we speak um to use their business and project management skills to help provide aid in the refugee camps. Um they've asked that I not use their names, but I would like to point out that they're actually using money from their own businesses to actually provide aid once they see what's happening in Poland uh to those refugees crossing the border. Um so I've got two more, Madam Mayor, if I can.
No, take your time councillor.
With Gpack, I'd just like to acknowledge five people who have actually passed away, who over twenty years ago started a campaign to get a new performing arts centre built. Um and until the times of their death, kept fighting exceedingly hard for it um and put in a lot of work, uh a lot of time and a lot of passion. And that's Jim Merritt, Harvey Pint, Phil McMahon, Bruce Bremner and Peter Woods. Um I think they all would have been exceedingly proud and had a tear in their eye had they seen the opening take place on the weekend. Um and finally, on a bit of good news, Madam Mayor, once again basketball related, there's a young basketballer from Traugan who also plays for Gippsland United uh by the name of Ben Waller, who's just been selected in the Australian Under Seventeen Squad. Uh Ben has just been through the state championships, playing for Country Victoria, where he absolutely excelled. And uh once again, I think uh, you know, he's just shown the merit of the young, the young people we have in this region. So congratulations to Ben on being picked in the Australian Squad. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks councillor Harriman, um it was great to see young people coming through and having those pathways and uh yes, you are passionate about your basketball and no one's ever going to be concerned about that at all. Councillors, any further acknowledgements before we move through? No, we're okay, we'll just move on. This is item seven and eight, the public participation time. We don't have any speakers this evening. We do have one public question, I'll just hand over to the CEO uh to provide an update in relation to that.
Sorry, I'm off mute, thanks Madam Mayor, just trying to find the button again. It's been a couple of days. Uh so I just uh did want to just make a comment about the questions I've noticed that are provided under our governance rules. They are designed to allow for clarification of issues of broad public interest. Um they're not designed to take place of contacting a council or councillor or councillor laws directly discussing issue or replace contacting our customer service team in relation to a specific matter. So for tonight's meeting, we do have one uh question that met that test of public interest, which was in from Andy Smith in relation to Star of the South Wind Farm. And the question relates to the following, with the state government announcing Star of the South Wind Farm, that it will be going ahead and it's Gippsland based. Um how will Latrobe City ensure that Latrobe Valley residents benefit from the claimed job creation of twenty four thousand by twenty thirty? And goes on further to comment that projects such as the Star of the South will ultimately cost jobs in the area over time and in turn have a negative effect on local economy. Local procurement, manufacturing and employment opportunities need to be prioritised to offset the impact on the existing power industry. Uh so in response to that broad question, uh our officers have been having meetings with Star of the South representatives about the opportunities, particularly for Latrobe City, but also the broader Latrobe Valley uh in relation to procurement opportunities for services and maintenance activities and construction. Um so we've also provided the uh our Latrobe Valley industrial capability profile, which contains details of local business and the specialist skills that are available in the region uh for them to consider. And officers will continue to meet with the Star of the South representatives as the projects develop and at the appropriate time establish a working group with them to ensure that businesses in Latrobe City have the best representation possible and have the opportunity to benefit from this investment. And in addition to that, we're also participating on their consultative, we consulted committee, I should add. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, question for tonight.
Thanks very much, Steve, and thanks for the clarification in terms of how it all works and how they get to us. Uh we'll be normally be moving on to one, none of the agenda, our notices are motioned, we don't have any notices for this meeting, which I know councillor Gibson uh will be talking to us in relation to potentially an alternate as we move into the next item on the agenda. These are items referred to the council meetings for consideration. This is item ten one, this is a consultant.
Madam Mayor, I've declared an interest for this item.
No, you did councillor Harriman, you did indeed.
Send to the sin room.
All right, well, you haven't evaporated yet, we'll give you a moment. There he's gone into the quiet twilight zone. I hope there's some music or something happening out in that waiting room, but I don't think there is. Uh so this is item ten one, the consultant's quotation for the investigator investigate a monitoring system of airborne soil lead levels. Commences on page ten of our agenda and those of you who have been following along with this will know that this has been brought forward on a deferred item from the previous meeting. Uh councillor Gibson, you have an alternate, which I believe the offices have available there on our screen. Is that consistent with your understanding of what we're moving towards councillor Gibson? Did you want to move?
Yes, please, and yes, I'd like to move it, please.
Thanks very much councillor Gibson. Do I have a second, uh? Councillor Howe was in. Thank you councillor Howe. Any opposition? No opposition on that one. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak to the alternate?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. Look, this has been a very contentious issue for quite a period of time and a lot of it is actually about, we've got a health innovation zone. Well, hang on, how does that work? So this is all about putting it back to the authorities as to um what can be put in place to all lay people's fears. So um this motion or this alternate motion is um asking the assistance of the EPA to undertake testing in the general area. Now, we also want an urgent assessment of what is there now. Because if you do not have a baseline, how can you tell if there's been any effect? You can't do it. So if you actually have that put in place, um that would be, I I think, most beneficial for the the whole area that is in um in the um vicinity of the the premises and it will give them a a sense of, well, I hope it gives them a sense of um calmness, maybe. Um so we're asking for that and a commitment from them to undertake ongoing assessments of the levels of lead and other trace men- menus, metals. It's been a long day, sorry.
It's been a long week councillor Gibson.
Well, it was a long weekend too, yes. Um so within the soil, so that's what we're asking because at the end of the day, um council doesn't have, as we all know, because we're in budget talks at the moment, we don't have a bottomless pit. Um and the the government's put this in place and that's okay, but we need to ensure that the monitoring is done properly. So it um people can understand, okay, it's all right, this is what it was. Is there a difference or not? They can see firsthand. So um we're also continuing to advocate. It's all right, can you hear the banging?
Yeah, it's all good, it's not loud.
Oh, that's all right, sorry about that. Um it's all right, I can't, um I'm about to run out of time anyway, sorry.
No, it's okay, keep going, I'll give you a bit more.
All right, so we want to um, we want the the funding to be provided to the EPA. So we're asking the minutes to to provide the funding to them to undertake the air monitoring um for it to be publicly available in real time because it's no use having it right there it was, but that was three months ago. And if if you have this, I I suggest people will um and if we listen to what's been said, what is going to be put in place by the the actual um company, there should be no um leakage. But this will show whether that is the case or not. So the the people, the public can see firsthand what it is and that should give them a, either way, whether it was up or down, that should give them a level of comfort that they know. So it's not as if they're going to be um finding out that, well, actually there's long um higher levels than you thought you were going to get or lower levels. And this will tell them in real time. So that's what we're asking and we don't believe we should be paying for it. So that's why it's back at them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Uh councillor Middlemiss, were you waiting in line to speak or was there a matter before I come to councillor Howe for his option to second?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, merely waiting in line.
No worries, councillor Howe, do you want to speak or?
I'll reserve this stage, Madam Mayor, thank you.
No worries, back to you councillor Middlemiss.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um I don't think there's much more that I can add to what councillor Gibson has said. We have concerns in the community. Um what, I think the only way of allaying concerns is to have a baseline uh measurement of what lead is there at the moment. Uh so people can see if there is any increase and I think the EPA have accepted that and mandated that. The other one is the uh monitoring of air emissions. I've done a little research on that and we've had one briefing from EPA and it appears that the cost of a machine to do real time monitoring, in other words, that the company would see the emissions at exactly the same time as members of the community would see them. The cost of that machine is somewhere in the region two hundred thousand dollars, uh which is a little bit concerning, I'd imagine, for whoever's got to pay for it. I've had a look today at the Mount Isa um situation. Mount Isa is a mine, Mount Isa is a smelter and a transporter of lead products. So um very high chance of of lead emissions in that town. And it appears that the um monitoring equipment, I think there are seven monitoring stations right round the town because of that greater concern. I believe that monitoring equipment um is based on counting the number of particles of a certain size over an hour. In other words, they've worked out through obviously scientific work which type of particle, excuse me, indicates lead emissions and it is weighed and reported on an hourly basis, which is very, very close to real time. So uh I believe that with a little bit more research, um the aims that councillor Gibson has set out here can be achieved. So I fully support this motion, thank you.
Right, thanks councillor Middlemiss. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak? Uh councillor Howe, you're reserved.
Oh, just very quickly, um the community are concerned. This is an option that will um which will which will um lead to their um lead to to um addressing those concerns. Also got farming out there and they're and they're worried about if it's going to affect their beef and everything. Um the EPA, they're the experts in this field. This is where we go to when we want um expert advice. So it makes sense to to speak to them about this. So very happy to second this and um to second this motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor, councillors. We didn't have any opposition, so we don't have any reason to close, but we did have speakers, so we will go to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss. Motion is carried unanimously for those of us here. Uh will the officers be able to retrieve councillor Harriman from the twilight zone that is the waiting room?
There is, yeah, sorry, he was joining.
Yay, great, we got you back. Good to have you back councillor Harriman. Uh items uh presented next come into items eleven and twelve. This is our correspondence, presentations of positions those kinds. This is our correspondence, presentations, petitions, those kinds of things to normally work through. We don't have any reports in related, in relation to those tonight. So, we'll keep moving through. Next, we have two reports from regional city strategy and transition. The first is item thirteen point one, authorisation of council officers under Planning and Environment Act nineteen eighty seven. Commences on page twenty five of our agendas. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Lund, moving? Very good. And councillor Gibson is there? Is it second? Do I have any opposition, councillors? No opposition there. Can we just close the microphone off in number if that's possible? Maybe background. Do you want me to do that? No, assuming that no one wants to speak to this one, it's primarily a procedural motion. All good on that. On that basis, with no speakers and no opposition councillors, we declare that one carried unanimously. Thank you. Item thirteen two is the second item. This relates to audit and risk. I note you councillor Middlemiss. This is the audit and risk committee remuneration and commencement for advertising for new independent members starts on page thirty two of our agenda. Councillor Middlemiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe the officers have considered the recommendation that is before us at the moment and come up with a slight modification. So, what I was highlighting, I'd like to see the modified proposal. And I'm prepared to move that.
Thank you very much. Just make sure that's up on the screen just to catch everybody up, and that relates to overcoming an issue around succession planning and opportunity there. So, happy to move that changed opportunity there, the alternate councillor Middlemiss. Great. Did I have a second there? And councillor Harriman has jumped in on the electronic hand on that one. Any opposition, councillors? Councillor Middlemiss, did you want to speak to this one?
Very briefly, thanks, Madam Mayor. This is a situation which comes up every now and again where the state through through the act specifies the maximum term for members of an audit committee. The idea being audit committee should be refreshed on a fairly regular basis. And two of our members, their their terms have are close to expiry. This motion suggests that we enter into process to replace Giant Booth and Terry Richards. And the process is outlined there, also outlines the method by which we will pay the the normal sitting fees for the members there. But also, just through one small error, we have a meeting scheduled about seven days after Terry Richards' period expires. Now, just to ensure continuity and to ensure Terry Richards signs off on his last work there. This motion actually suggests that we extend his term for a week or so just to allow him to do that. So, they're very procedural matters, very straightforward. They have been expected for some time, but just following normal procedure. But I should also, as a former audit and risk committee member, pay tribute to the work by Mr Richards and Ms Booth, who both worked very hard for an extensive period of time, six and eight years, on behalf of council. This committee works solely to ensure that the governance of council is working properly. And the motion recommends that they be noted and commended, and I'd certainly like to add my words to it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Harriman, did you want to speak or reserve?
No, I think councillor Middlemiss has now looked quite succinctly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Fantastic. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak? Councillors, there's been no opposition, so we don't need to close, but we have head speakers, so we will need to go to the vote. Those in favour, councillors. Councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman and myself, that one's carried unanimously. Thank you very much councillors. Next up, of the two reports from regional city planning and assets, the first item is fourteen one, regional car parks fund. Councillor Clancy, I note you, he's disappeared, he's into the waiting room. So, this is commencing on page thirty seven of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Harriman is there and then councillor Howe. Any opposition, councillors? No opposition on that one, councillors. Councillor Harriman, over to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it's just to to explain to the community what's happening is there were a number of sites put up as potential car parking sites. Some have already been developed, as we've seen through Moorwall with the rail rail car park work going on in the new station. These are the next three sites that we'd like to see developed, which are the Big Track Lot eighteen at Queen's Parade, Terrelegan, which is for everyone on the south side of the railway station. It's the K Street, number two K Street, belonging to council's current car park. We're looking at putting another deck on the current car park. And one forty one Commercial Road, Moorwall, which is the Western Car Park. Basically, what we're doing, councillors decided these are the next three that we'd like to see developed, have advised Regional Development in Victoria of that. And part of what we're doing here is so the works aren't held up, we're delegating authority to the CEO to go over his one million dollar limit to make sure that we get these car parks built as quickly as possible because there's obviously a huge need right through Latrobe City for extra car parking. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thanks so much councillor Harriman. Councillor Howe?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll just add a little bit briefly if I may. These sites will provide, once they're developed, will provide extra four hundred spaces for Terrelegan and a hundred and seventy three in Moorwell. Speaking as a East Ward councillor, not a week goes by without a complaint from either a resident or a shop owner about the lack of parking in our CBD. And I would assume that councillor Middlemiss and councillor Lund would get similar complaints in Moorwell. So, also the site seven location, which is the one in K Street, it's well positioned to accommodate any parking overflow from the new performing arts centre, which includes our visitor information centre and also the recently completed aquatic centre across the road. So, for Terrelegan, it will mean that we'll have more all day, more two hour, more fifteen minute and more disabled parking for all our workers, our residents and all our visitors. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks so much councillor Howe. Any other councillor wish to speak? No opposition. We don't have to close, but we have head speakers. We'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman and myself, that one's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. We'll just retrieve councillor Clancy. There he is. That was quick. Didn't fall over the balcony in the meantime. All very good. Moving on to the second item, this is fourteen two, Twin City Archery, increasing costs, commencing page fifty five councillor Middlemiss. I note you councillor Howe also has a hand there as well. Are you moving councillor Middlemiss?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great. Seconding councillor Howe. Fantastic. Any opposition councillors? No opposition on that one councillor Harriman. Councillor Middlemiss, back to you.
As there's no opposition, I'll keep it as briefly as possible. Madam Mayor, over about a twenty year period, the Twin City Archery Club, based at Duner's Lane in Moor has put together a fabulous indoor archery range and outdoor archery range and a field game range, excuse me, to the point where they are now able to host national, state and international events. And as I keep explaining to people, every person who comes to the valley to participate in these events or to watch these events brings their wallet to our, to the benefit of our economy, particularly our hospitality economy, that they eat and stay here. So, you know, this this is a great facility for our city, but it is being built by voluntary labour almost on a chook raffle basis over the years, and the building is, shall we say, fairly tired in parts. Council officers have made an assessment of the main area, which I'd say would be the hospitality area. That's where the kitchen is. That's where you register to take part in the programmes, where you sit and wait your turn, et cetera. Was almost beyond rehabilitation and council sought funding and obtained funding, particularly from state and federal governments to rebuild this front part of the building. We came, we had an architect come up with the design. The design was signed off by the club. And we went out for costs and it appears, and I'm not sure I understand why, but it appears as a result of COVID or perhaps of the result of the great deal of building activity in the valley of last three or four years, that the cost of the building was vastly above what our estimates were. What we did as a council is then redesigned the building. We cut it down to, shall we say, a minimalist model. To their credit, the club bit their tongue and shut up and said, yeah, we'll accept that begrudgingly. And so, we've now got a better design and we put that out to cost, and the costs are still extremely high. So, what we're looking here is to take some of the the council fund to assist in building this new premises so that we get the top facility. And there is also a hope in the council officers' hearts, I think, that we will be able to do it cheaper than the money we're sitting here. But certainly, a great facility for the valley. It's a pity at the moment that building costs seem to be out of whack, but we may get there cheaper than this. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Howe, speak or reserve?
I'll just speak very, very quickly. The the thing to remember too is this archery club is the only one of its kind in Latrobe City. So, it's not like our other sports, like our football, soccer, netball, where they've got multiple venues. If they haven't got one venue to work, they can go somewhere else. This is the only venue they have. And as councillor Middlemiss said, they regularly host regional, state and national events. And I think that if they put their their hand up for the twenty twenty six Commonwealth Games as well, if if they're being held in Victoria. So, with my hat as chair of the Tourism and Motor Events Committee, I also think that this is a tremendous notion and very happy to support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Right. Thanks councillor Howe. Councillors, any further speakers? No, there was no opposition, so we don't need to close. We did have speakers. We're going to put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy and myself, we've carried that one unanimously. We are now moving on. This is fifteen one, Municipal Public Health, councillor Clancy, I note you. And this is the plan for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty five, commencing on page eighty seven. Do I have a second up? Councillor Lund, very good. Do we have any opposition on that one, councillors? Councillor Clancy, over to you.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. This this is our municipal health and wellbeing. It's called our community's municipal health and wellbeing plan, and we we affectionately just call it the plan as around the the council. But this is a a resolution that's been put forward to adopt the current plan after it's gone through the the period of consultation and the period of exhibition for for the community to look at as well. There's been so many eyes over this. We're at a point where we need to adopt this plan. So, it's what we're bringing forward tonight. But I'll talk about the consultation process a little bit further on. But the plan describes how Latrobe City Council and and the people within it will work within our community, the external providers, the advocacy agencies and the internal teams by maintaining and improving the community's overall health and wellbeing. This is this is the plan that we have for the health and wellbeing of not just the people of our community, but the people who work within it and the stakeholders that provide those services as well. This plan has six guiding principles, and it's a very, very handsome looking document. It's really worthwhile picking up a copy and having a look over it. It is a great representation of our community and and the activities that happen within our community. And the six guiding principles that we have applied throughout this plan are as follows, and if you allow me, councillors, I think it's worthwhile noting what these principles are. Number one is that that we as a council are committed to an evidence-based practice, which is informed by community input and evaluation. Number two is that we build on what we already have, that we already celebrate our community by utilizing the built natural assets to enhance the health and wellbeing of our community. We integrate health and wellbeing objectives across all aspects of council. That's including all of our policies, our planning decisions. We should integrate the health and wellbeing objectives as well. We ensure that all of our actions have a focus on affordability, accessibility and inclusivity. Number five of these six guiding principles is we focus on prevention. Number six is we acknowledge that some people experience poorer health outcomes, depending on their physical and their social environments as well. The the consultation process that I mentioned early on, Madam Mayor, has been extensive and it has gone. Everyone, please yell out because I can't see the clock from where I am, but I know that I'm heading towards the end of my time.
Thirty seconds out councillor.
Yes, so we've gone through, the councillors have looked over this through the briefing process. The internal governance group has gone through this. There's been internal staff consultations. There's been the gathering of health and wellbeing data. There's been the health and wellbeing consultation partners. And the last thing that we did is we went out to the community to survey the community on what they thought on on what this plan was. And we, our survey was completed by over one thousand four hundred and fifty community members. So, this has gone through an extensive consultation process, and I recommend to my colleagues to adopt this plan this evening.
Thank you so much councillor Clancy. Councillor Lund?
Not sure I can add much more to what councillor Clancy has said. It's been a huge body of work over quite a long period of time, and I think I think the thing I took away from it was the amount of community consultation and community input that we did receive through throughout this, you know, through gathering all this information for the report. I think it reflects our community's visions and aspirations, and I I was really, yeah, really inspired by this report, and I'm really glad to see that health is being integrated across our organisation.
Thanks councillor. Councillor Middlemiss?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Very little that I can add. I don't think councillor Clancy emphasised enough the amount of work that has gone into this. And I commend the council officers who have done this work. But on top of that, the five councillors who have ridden this process for quite some considerable time now, and that's yourself, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Ferguson and councillor Lund. A tremendous amount of work there. And as councillor Lund says, it is intended to reflect the aspirations of our community. Actually, if you read it, you'll probably find that it reflects the aspirations of all Australians. It is really well pulled together. And now, I just wanted to add a small anecdote to this. Councillor Lund and I have been dealing for some time with a lady, an elderly lady who has a disability, who lives in Moorwall, and is very concerned about where our community is going, what we're doing, those kind of. And I really look forward to seeing if I can get an audio copy of this report to show her, to show that our community is concerned and is keen to do things better. So, I certainly, like the previous speakers, commend this report.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillors, any further speakers? Had no opposition to this one, but we have had speakers. We will put it to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy and myself. Thank you councillors, you've made me very, very happy. We're now moving on to the next item. These are related to organisational performance. The first is sixteen one, proposed sale of land. This is Main Street, Terrelegan, commencing on page one twenty eight. Your agenda councillor Harriman, you're first up, moving?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor.
No worries. Councillor Howe, your hand was there as well. Are you my second up?
Yep, happy to second. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Fantastic. Any opposition councillors? No opposition. Back to you councillor Harriman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to advise the community what's happening here, there was, or there is or was, a laneway that butted the residence of two mains, two Main Street. It was meant to be sold in, I believe, nineteen seventy eight. There was an agreement with the city of Terrelegan to sell the land. Unfortunately, as happens, both sides thought the other side had gone through and done what they needed to be done. There was no record of it. The owners of Main Street are now looking to sell that land, and they've already fenced in what they thought they'd bought. This just gives them the option to buy it at commercial rates, so the ratepayers aren't aren't out of pocket. But we don't want to punish the the owners, having been there for what is now forty four years, having this as part of their land. So, it's just to just to Um, so it's just to, just to go about, um, and, and look at, uh, going to the community, seeing if anybody else is interested in buying it and looking at it, at selling it at a commercial rate. Really just to tidy up something that should have been taken care of on the first of February 1978. I think it's only fair and just to our, our rate payers in this situation that they're not disadvantaged. Um, it's not a huge amount of land, it's 138 square metres. Um, and as we said, it, it's going to be done so that it's just to both sides. Uh, there's no real value to the land. As I said, it's a former laneway, other land's been taken up with it. Um, so I'm, I'm asking our fellow councillors to support this and, uh, look after our rate payers who unfortunately have, um, owned some land, they've occupied for 42 years, 44 years and hasn't been that way. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Councillor Howe?
Uh, nothing to add. I think it's, um, all pretty straightforward and councillor Harriman, uh, spoke to it pretty well. Thank you.
He's covered it all. Fantastic. Uh, councillors, any further speakers? Had no opposition, so we don't have a close, but we have had speakers, so I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy and myself. That one's carried unanimously. Thanks councillors. Second item in this group of reports is 16.2, this is 2021, 2022 mid-year budget review commencing on page 136. Do you have a motion councillors? Who we got? Anybody moving? Councillor Middlemiss is up. Do I have a second councillor Howe as my second? Do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Middlemiss, over to you.
Um, I was just thinking if I speak or prolong the meeting, but I've got very little to say, but perhaps I should. Uh, these are four, um, priority projects that, uh, council officers have, uh, have identified. Um, that we've, we've actually infringed the tree register. Um, fixing up one of the early bank nursery sheds, which obviously has a lean. Uh, demolishing another one so we can bring in the, um, uh, the Currie Cooperative to, to work there and, uh, promotion costs for the Gibson Performing Arts Centre. No use having this brand new building if we can't promote it. So, uh, just in the mid-year budget review, officers have identified that there are, is a small amount of money available. And I say small amount of money, uh, that's to most people it's a large, but it is a very small amount of money in the, in the context of our budget. And suggested that that, uh, small surplus could be used for these projects. And as you can see, there is no opposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Howe?
Uh, very briefly, just adding to what councillor Middlemiss has said. Um, it is a one, nearly $1.9 million, um, forecasted surplus. But we've got some challenges coming up with, um, with the redevelopment of, of the Rec Reserve in Terrelegan, um, as well as Glenview. Um, and there are some flooding issues around our city that we need to look at. So we, I think it's important that we do, um, keep that, what have we got, 1.6 or 1.6, 1.7 million, um, in reserve because we are going to have these costs come up, um, in the next 12 months that we, we're going to need to, um, address. So thought I'd add that. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thanks so much councillor. Any other councillors want to contribute to this one? No, we've had no opposition, so we don't have a close. We have had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour councillors? Councillor Howe, can you go councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy and myself carried.
No, no hand up here, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry Dale, did I?
That's all right.
No, no, uh, okay, so we'll go back. Sorry, I'm going to do a recount on that one. I thought I saw a flicker in the, in the shadows here and I've given councillor Harriman a vote that he didn't have. Go back again as I hesitated at the front, I thought I'd missed it. Those in favour councillors, we've got councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss is voting twice. Councillor Clancy and myself. Those against? Those abstaining? Councillor Harriman, thank you very much. That one's carried. Apologies councillor Harriman, I got you caught in the shadows. All right, I think we're good. The governance team will let me know if we need to recheck that, but I think we're good and clear, Mr Peasenty? Yep, we got it. Great. Okay, thanks very much for that. We move on to urgent business now. I don't believe we have any matters of urgent business. But if anyone wants to correct me, if anything exciting's happening or been on air. Nope, we can keep moving on those. We're moving to, uh, the close off of our meeting with nothing else we have here. We don't have any confidential items. There's nothing being considered enclosed tonight, which makes councillor Middlemiss very, very happy. And, uh, that moves us on. Thank you to everyone who's been participating through the live stream. It's great to have you with us and, uh, there are no further items on tonight's agenda. Declare the meeting closed at 7.06 PM. We look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Thanks so much for joining us. The councillors will stay online as we close off. Good night everyone. Thanks so much.